Hello, Cleveland.
Versus red.
Hello, Cleveland. Subplants, subplants. I'm as free as a bird now. Oh.
Gonna call this, uh, September 3rd council work session to order. Everybody knows how Tuesday'll start, so we'll jump into the consent agendas. If, uh, any member feels that any item needs to be pulled and placed into the regular agenda, please let me know. Item 7 is payment of the bills. Item 8 is resolution approving an alcohol license for Exxon 150 LLC, DBA Exxon 150. 2270 Highway 280, Farm and Jawani Executive. So this is the Exxon 150, but it's gonna reside on 280. Is that right, Madam Clerk? I'm sorry?
Exxon 150 is just the name of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Everything's back?
Yes, it is, and the letter from the Chief of Police informs that the Police Department is not opposed to the approval of the application.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the council? Next, item 9, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Rocky Ridge Fire District Chief Etheridge. Come on down. You'll have to ask one of the technicians.
Is it working now? Yes, sir, this is a automatic aid and mutual aid agreement between the City of Hoover and the Rocky Ridge Fire District, uh, for us to help each other out in areas where we have overlap in coverage. And, uh, some areas we think is really gonna help us out in is, uh, Rocky Ridge Elementary School, Hoover School, uh, school boards there, and International Park, where we'll see a lot of advantage from that, so. Um, we've looked it over, looked at all the streets, and, uh, the Fire Chief is in agreement, and, uh, Rocky Ridge Fire Chief is in agreement, it'll be, uh, mutual beneficial for both parties.
And now we'd have 360-degree coverage with, uh...
Yes, sir.
...neighboring agencies.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Any comments or questions from the council? Uh, Chief, I think you're still here. Resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with the University of Alabama Birmingham.
Uh, yes, sir, this is a, um, an agreement with, uh, UAB to help, uh, their emergency room positions that are medical control when we call in at the hospital, gives them some training out here in the field, so that they know what we're doing when we call in. And, uh, we hope that we'll also benefit from that as well, having emergency positions on our rescue trucks that can help, uh, in, uh, you know, more critical patients and that kinda stuff, and give our guys some, some better training. So I think it's, uh, once again, gonna work, uh, work well for UAB, and it's gonna work well for the Fire Department and the city.
Do you know how often you may have, uh...
Uh, no, sir, it would just kinda depend on how often they have the, the residents coming through, um, so, and I'm not sure how many we would have, and...
Who has control of the scene if you have a physician there?
Uh, it would still be medical direction, it'd depend on what the scene is, I don't, they're not gonna come in and...
Well, I'm talking about like on the scene of a wreck. Would it be our paramedics?
It would still, it would still be our, our paramedic, sir, is my understanding.
Just wondering.
Now, that, they can, under medical direction, if we call the medical control and we have one there, if they wanna do that, they can, but then, you know, they know once they do that, they're, they're stuck with a patient the entire time.
Right.
They can't turn around and, and relieve that, uh, that patient care, so...
Very good. I got a story for you sometime about the doctor that showed up on a wreck scene, and the patient was covered in carpet glue.
Yes, sir.
And he said he'd evaluated the patient, but he didn't have any glue on him.
That's right, yes, sir.
Um, any questions for the Chief on this? All right, sir, thank you. Mr. Reeves, a resolution accepting public improvements within public right-of-way. Item 11.
Yes, sir. Item 11 is acceptance of public improvements for the North Ridge subdivision. It's located off of Brightscout Parkway, just north of Chestnut Ridge. Uh, the developer was US Steel, it includes 35 residential, residential lots, includes one street, which is approximately 1,750 feet in length. We currently have two bonds for this subdivision, uh, an erosion control bond in the amount of $24,000, and a development bond in the amount of $84,000.
Any comments or questions? Now, it will move to item 12, basically the same thing in another place.
Yes, sir. Um, this is a set of improvements, public right-of-way for Preserve Phase 12. It's located off of Founder's Park Drive along Renaissance Drive, excuse me, located south of Founder Park, Founder's Park Drive. Would y'all mind if I take this off?
That's fine.
Uh, this subdivision was also developed by US Steel, and it includes 11 residential lots, it includes one street, a portion of Renaissance Drive, it's approximately 1,000 feet. We currently have two bonds for this subdivision as well. We have an erosion control bond in the amount of $37,000. Uh, this bond also covers Phase 13, which is the next item on the agenda, and we have a development bond in the amount of $130,000. That was the original amount, we reduced it in 2018 to $65,000.
Little off the topic, but I noticed that the commercial area has been, um, de-vegetated for quite some time. Do you have any idea when that may start to build out?
No, sir, I can certainly ask from Mr. Silver and try to have you that answer Monday night.
It'd be nice.
Yes, sir.
But you might wanna wait till Tuesday.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, Tuesday night.
Any questions from Mr. Reeves on any of these? If not, moving on to item 14, a resolution accepting a change order for the Cabo River, or Cabo Greenway.
And I apologize, Mr. Smith, I had one more. It was for acceptance of Phase 13, uh, it was developed by US Steel as well, it's 27 lots, these two phases are adjacent, uh, it includes...
Is it, is it on our list?
Yes, sir, it's, uh, resolution number 6310.
Oh, okay. Very good.
So I apologize for that, I think I confused...
No, sir, that's on me.
...a few things a little bit. Uh, we have two bonds for this one as well, the erosion control bond in the amount of 37, which I mentioned, covers both phases, and a development bond that's been reduced to $80,000. I just wanna note that, uh, the way, we had a question earlier, and I apologize for not putting this in the packet, Mr. Rice asked me this question, uh, they've done a, in my opinion, done a good job in developing the Preserve, they developed it from the south to the north. These two phases are, are developed to the north, all the future construction is to the north of this. So if we accept these roadways, we won't have any construction traffic on existing residential sections, all the construction traffic will, will enter to those areas from Preserve Parkway.
What size lots will these have?
Uh, these lots, Phase 13 varied, uh, there were some smaller lots and, and some larger lots. I have the, the record plaid I can send you.
Any E2, or...
No, sir, no, sir, no estate lots.
It goes from smaller to R1, I guess.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And the record plaid is...
I'm sorry?
The record plaid is in the agenda packet.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from Mr. Reeves on item 13? Uh, now, we're gonna move down to item 14, a resolution accepting a change order for the Cabo Greenway.
Yes, sir, the, uh, as y'all know, the Cabo Greenway project's located off Montgomery Highway, it's just north of the Rio Chase Elementary School, and the Cabo River's located between those two, uh, facilities. The project was constructed with an Aldot TAP grant, which means we had 80% participation from, from Aldot, 20% funds from, from the city. We did complete this project earlier this year, uh, we're currently working with Aldot, attempting to close this project out, and we realized that we had never brought this forth since we actually issued the contract for this, not Aldot. We never brought the final changes to the City Council, so, apologize for that, that was another oversight on our part. We're asking authorization to, to modify the existing contract for existing work order in the amount of $74,008.60, and a deductive work change order in the amount of $311,352.69. Uh, these changes have been discussed with Aldot, Triple J Construction, the contractor, and everyone is okay with these changes.
So, uh, there'd be a net saving to the city?
Yes, sir.
And that would be, sounds like, uh, almost quarter of a million dollars?
Well, the, the city's portion, um, savings with this reduction, with 20%, um, is approximately $40,000.
Forty thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. Always good to save money. What's gonna happen to these funds that are saved?
Go back to the general fund, yes, sir. We're, we're trying to close out our POs and, and return that money.
Good answer.
Yes, sir.
Good answer. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Mr. Murphy.
Uh, as we navigate to deal with these construction projects, uh, I see was Triple J Construction was the lowest responsible bidder, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right, so I know those are Aldot jobs, and they require many times some MBE, DBE, WMBD participation, did they have any on that?
Yes, sir, they did. They met all the Aldot requirements, yes.
What, what percentage? You know percentage?
No, sir, I apologize, I don't know that right off...
That's fine, that's fine. Um, as we navigate, uh, towards, uh, awarding contracts, we can set up, uh, local preferences as well, too, as far as, um, um, participation rates that we are seeking as well. We can do that, so, uh, do, do, I, I know we had discussed that sometime back in trying to develop that, can I get an update on that piece of it?
Yes, sir, so, Mr. Murphy, um, Mr. Powell had developed a very robust, um, supplier diversity program, which would cover not only construction projects, but any kinda goods and services. He's in the process of trying to get that implemented, we actually were talking about it about 45 minutes ago, but we are working into our new software, and so there is a functionality there that's built into Tyler, that will actually facilitate that much more readily, so we're trying to come up with some kind of a bridge process that we can use between now and when Tyler's fully implemented. It's virtually, it's very, very difficult to do under HTE, to, to build in the parameters so that when we go to do purchasing, we already have supplier diversity incorporated in the software, so we're gonna come up with a way to do that between now and when we get on to Tyler, when we get on to Tyler, it'll be built in.
Yeah, so, um, and that will be also, uh, policy-driven, or at least a program-driven basis?
Right, he's already developed, at the mayor's direction, Mr. Powell had already developed the parameters.
Yeah.
And now it's a matter of just implementing them into the process.
'Cause they're looking at like wood, and, and you know, got porta-potties, you have concrete, you have asphalt, you have curb work, you have, uh, other than the material itself, right? There's a lot of opportunity for small hubs, and I wanna kinda keep in mind that, uh, these folks, they cannot prime, many of them can't. But they work better in the sub-atmosphere.
Right.
So, you know, I just wanna kinda get an update on that, I appreciate that.
Sure, yes, sir.
Would that be up to the contractor to obtain those, or would the city bid that separate?
Yeah, so, a, a city can set parameters to, uh, of expectation on bids. Uh, Aldot, FEMA, federal government, and many, um, utilities have certain requirements, many of them have 20% or even 80% hub participation. Many contractors are certified through Aldot, their, uh, DBE program, so you can get certified through a state entity already. So, all these contractors know about it, 'cause when they bid on work, they have to comply.
Are there any, and, and I'm going somewhere with this, are there any exceptions permitted for...
Yes.
...those types, because...
Yes, you have...
Back in the day, and, and somewhere along the way, things changed, but, uh, there was a time that if a business was located in the city, they were allowed a 5% to 10% leeway to where they could go above the lowest responsible price if they were in in-city.
Right.
And I didn't know if maybe if these type contractors would be able to receive a similar consideration.
Right, so does state law states that for goods and services, you can do that, but, uh, they don't have it for public works, meaning, uh, the folk that actually do the work itself bill, uh, is not a man, uh, private, but we can, based upon state law, material, we can go in that percentage range and go to the second one, uh, as well. And also, you can do a, if it's, uh, outside the state, uh, if you have a state, uh, company that produces a product, you can use them over somebody in Georgia.
But the city could set its own parameters in assistance with the state bid?
Yeah, you, you can, you, you cannot mandate earmark money like, uh, the federal government does with 8A contracts.
Okay.
But you can have, um, put like this, if you set up a program, and that's a part of your program, if, if they don't adhere to trying to work towards that, they can be an irresponsible bidder and be rejected.
Very good.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you. Um, Mr. Powell, item 15, a resolution determining that certain personal property is not needed for public or municipal purposes and directing the disposal of said surplus. It looks like the first one is a recapture.
Well, yes, sir, we actually have, um, a long list of, of items that were declaring surplus and intended to dispose of them by auction, but then, a, as you mentioned, there is a recapture. We do have one, one vehicle that was declared as surplus in our most recent, um, declaration of, of items, uh, should not have been declared surplus, and our fleet department is, uh, hoping that we'll reverse that decision so that they can utilize, put that vehicle back in service, and, and, uh, that's what I'm asking for here, uh, in the be it further resolved portion of this resolution.
Mr. Corley, would that require a separate vote to recapture that vehicle, or can it be involved with all the ones that are being, um, uh, surplussed?
It should be included in the resolution.
It can be, okay.
Yes.
Just, just making sure. Looking at item, I guess, 87, on page 2, miscellaneous old office accessories, um, what would include, what would be included in that?
So, if, if, um, you recall when this renovation project on this floor first began, there was a lot of office furniture and little accessories, um, side tables, um, uh, knickknacks here and there, um, maybe a, um, some, uh, office equipment like a, a laminator, you know, things like that, that are, um, sitting around the office that were put in storage, okay? And as we're moving back in and people are about to, um, go back into their offices, there will be some items that are like that, that will not be going back into the, the new office as they move back in. And so those items are in storage right now, and they're, um, they're not large furniture items, they're just knickknacks and, and things like that.
Does that include the old city seal that was on the front of the old dais?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm, that, I don't, I don't know that that would be part of it.
I talked to Mr. Mathis, and he said that it was too large to use in the remodeled area here, um, but I also know that it was found in the trash at the Galleria Office Tower.
Hmm, I'm, I'm not aware of that, but I, I don't know, um, I, I, all of these items that are listed here are coming from that storage unit, so you're saying that there was an item that was discarded in some other way?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm not familiar with that, I'll have to ask and find out what's going on with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Uh, moving on to item 16, a resolution for the emergency repair to Mountain Oaks Drive, Mr. Reeves. I spoke to Mr. Rice last night, and he gave a good report that we're not gonna have to rebuild the, uh, covered bridge, that we're just gonna reinforce the support system.
Yes, sir, that, that's the goal, I think we'll be able to accomplish that. Uh, just a little brief history on, on the situation we have, we were notified on Monday, July 27th, uh, of a developed sinkhole on Mountain, Mountain Oaks Drive underneath the covered structure. After evaluating the conditions of the roadway and the associated culvert, we closed this section of Mountain, Mountain Oaks Drive due to public safety concerns, uh, with the culvert and the roadway in this area till we could, you know, get it, uh, satisfactorily repaired. Uh, just for, for your knowledge, I don't know if many of you know, the culvert, uh, in this area is actually 12-foot in diameter, is approximately 50-foot long, it's a very, very large culvert, uh, carries a lot of water. Since this is a culvert or a pipe, it's not classified as a bridge, so it's not in our yearly required bridge inspections that we do, uh, just in case you had a question why, why it wasn't noted previously. Over the years, that, as we see with many metal pipes, uh, the flow line of the culvert has deteriorated and rusted, uh, the flow from Huckleberry Branch, uh, due to these issues, has eroded the material underneath the culvert to the point that the normal daily flow of Huckleberry Branch is actually flowing underneath the culvert. Uh, so the, the flow has continually eroded material from the sides of the culvert to the point that the adjacent material on, has been removed all the way to the asphalt base layer of, of the Mountain Oaks Drive, and that's why we, we thought it was very imperative that we close the road when we did. As I said, this is a, a very common problem with, with, uh, reinforced corrugated metal pipes, uh, the flow lines do rust out, and it, it just sucks the material out from that flow line and around the pipe, kinda like if you go to the beach, you build a sandcastle next to the ocean, the water comes in, washes out, just takes all the sand, too. It's kinda, not the same thing, but kinda the same principle, it just takes all the adjacent material away. Uh, over the past few weeks, we have been working with Shoal Engineering, uh, they're a local company here in Birmingham, to develop a cost-efficient solution, uh, to address these issues. They recently worked with Mountain Brook on a, a 14-foot culvert, and have been very successful in remediating that, uh, issue there. The mediation plan includes the following, there are really four major items, it's placing a flowable concrete grout to fill the voids, the voids in the eroded areas around the pipe, installing a, a cast-in-place flow line, the entire length of the pipe, uh, this will stabilize the contact surface, uh, and prevent the loss of any additional material in the future, and add structural integrity to the pipe. They also install a concrete apron at the exit end of the culvert, this will help dissipate the energy and, and present, help prevent additional erosion at the exit part of that culvert. And finally, they'll, they'll insert, um, they're recommending we insert a pressurized chemical grout, uh, in this area to fill any voids that the concrete might not have captured as the concrete grout was installed. The work will be very challenging, and I know y'all have seen this area, the slopes on both sides of the roadway are very steep, um, with this plan, we will be able, as, as Mr. Smith said, complete this without removing the covered structure, or digging up the road, which is a plus. The estimated cost for the work's approximately $250,000, and are conversations with, with the... And our conversations with, with a contractor, they say they can complete it within sixty days, uh, of our notice to proceed. And they can start the work, you know, almost immediately, as soon as we can, uh, issue them a notice. Uh, note that if we were completely to replace the covert, uh, replace the, the, um, covered structure, the roadway, uh, we're looking at, their estimates are in excess of a million dollars to, to do this repair. Uh, we have got estimates, the estimates we have are from, just for your knowledge, are from Video Industrial, they do this type of work all over town, and, uh, we've actually used them before, uh, to fix a problem on Hugh Daniel Drive several years ago.
And you anticipate, uh, the cost of being no more than two hundred and fifty thousand?
Yes, sir, we're, we're very confident with that number.
Any questions for Mr. Reeves?
I, I do.
Yes, sir.
I grew up in a house beside it, so I've got some questions about, um, so you're saying you're going to leave the pipe, but you're going to concrete all around it and, and build it to where that, to where it gets, I know what you're talking about, it comes in, it hits that rock wall?
Yes, sir.
And when you have those, you have heavy rains coming through there, I mean, it, it takes that thing from nothing to halfway full, and the only time I've really seen it full is Hurricane Frederick filled the thing all the way up.
Right.
But, so you're going to stop that flow from hitting the bottom and then going up over it, and are you talking about, when you're talking about erosion, you're talking, you're talking about that front side where the water comes in, not where it's deeper on the other side?
Yes, sir, we're actually talking about the other side.
Where it's deeper down?
Yes, sir, what will happen when it, when it comes out of the backside of it, it will, the water will roll.
Instead of spreading out?
Yes, sir, instead of spread out, so this will prevent that rolling effect and that eroding effect on the downstream.
So what it's doing is all the dirt around that pipe, all the way up to the top, is sinking down?
Yes, sir.
But the pipe didn't drop itself?
No, sir, the pipe did not drop, it just sucked the, the material from around the pipe.
Okay.
And as, as the flows came up, it, it just continually washes it downstream.
Thank you, my dad's an engineer and living by that, he wanted to know all those things, so I'm glad you answered his questions.
Yes, sir.
Now he just needs to watch the video. Uh, Mr. Murphy, did you have something, or Mr. Green?
I did, yes, Mr. President. And do you know where these funds will, will come from?
No, sir, but I, I think, uh?
That's next on the agenda.
Mr. Rice may have some opportunities.
And, uh, as far as the history, that bridge is how old, as old as the community, is it forty, fifty years old?
Nineteen sixty-eight or nine, I think.
Yes, sir, I'll defer to Mr. Posey.
It was, it, that road used to be a dead end, so they put that in to connect the two, and I think it, that, our house that was there was built nineteen sixty-eight, I think the bridge is the same age.
And is the first, uh, such repairs of this as there's, that we've had to make?
Yes, sir, to this magnitude. Yes, sir, we did repair a smaller pipe on Hugh Daniel Drive, uh, four or five years ago, but it was nothing to this extent.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, just one question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I know a time back, uh, I think, uh, Rod and Tim were trying to go before the county to increase that, the stormwater fee associated, did, was that, was that ever done?
Yes, sir, that was done.
Did it make much of a, a dent in, in annual collection?
I believe it did, but I'll have to defer to Ms. Bolt to, to discuss the, the total amount of those fees.
Okay.
Uh, the, the residential fees, uh, stayed the same, but the commercial fees increased depending on the size of the commercial area.
Yeah, do you believe that we're, with, looking at all these, the stormwater and the inlands and everything, we're, we're, we're close to that, um, timeline on useful life, where it's time to redesign, to upgrade, and it's a dollar amount to be, we need to consider capitalizing or planning every year?
Yes, sir, uh, we've had the opportunity this week to, to visit a lot of, a lot of areas, and a majority of the issues that, that we're seeing are related to these corrugated metal pipes and, you know, the same situation, the bottom are completely rusted out of.
Yeah.
And, uh, we basically have the, the same situation, just on a smaller scale.
Any capacity issues you think because of development has occurred, or, or just really, um, it's time to be upgraded and?
No, sir, I think, you know, that these fifty years is generally a rule of thumb, as you know, for, for these metal pipes.
But no capacity issue?
No, no, sir, you know, we can always study that if we're going to replace one, uh, to see with the development upstream, to see if we do need to, to increase the size, but it's a domino effect, of course, as you know.
Yes, sir.
We just have to make sure we don't improve something here that causes issues downstream.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, next, uh, item seventeen is a budget amendment for the purpose of the repairs to the Mountain Oaks Drive Bridge.
Yes, Mr. President, so for the budget amendment, we are taking funds within the capital projects fund and just reallocating them to this project. Um, hundred and eight thousand dollars from Randall House, that was money that was not spent for the purchase of Randall House. Um, the radio tower project, um, we had forty thousand, eight hundred dollars left in that as well. Um, the radio flash upgrade, um, we were postponing that for future nine-one-one funds. And then the cardiac monitors, we had fifty thousand dollars left. So that will total actually two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five twenty-five, so it's just being reallocated within the capital projects fund.
What would, what was the radio tower project going to assist with? And are we putting public safety communications in jeopardy by defunding this project?
No, we, we completed the project, it's, that, that's excess funds, that's all been done.
Okay.
And everything on here's been accomplished and all this money is excess, would have gone back to the general fund with the exception of the radio flash upgrade process, which is, uh, a, a convenience and an efficiency, but not absolutely essential. So we're going to ask if we can defer that till next budget, and then instead of coming out of the general fund capital, as Ms. Bolt indicated, reroute that to the nine-one-one money that we received from the state.
Very good, any questions from Mr. Rice?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I missed, uh, one of the figures, I've got the one oh eight, forty, and fifty, what did I miss?
Uh, hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six was the excess funds in the Randall House.
Okay.
Leftover after purchasing the Hoover Randall House. Forty thousand, eight hundred and six dollars in the, uh, radio tower project, which has been completed, fifty-eight thousand for the flash upgrades, which we'll defer and take from another source. Uh, fifty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars from, uh, unused funds to replace cardiac monitors in the fire department, that's, they've already gotten the ones that they need, and that money was left over, and that was it.
I see it now, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Very good, um, that, uh, does anybody have any need to move any of those items off the consent agenda? If not?
Mr. President, can I, can I suggest one?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and I'll be on vacation. Uh, uh, number eighteen, you know, feel free to move that to, move that out to the consent.
Okay, you're not going to be here on Tuesday?
No, sir.
So we can move eighteen up to the consent agenda. Ms. Dickinson? You got that? Okay. Uh, item eighteen, uh, resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Birmingham Water Works, chief.
Uh, yes, sir, this is an agreement just that outlines that the Birmingham Water Works will provide a fire main, uh, for the, uh, fire protection system for Fire Station Eleven, and the city will be responsible for the, uh, service and maintenance of the, uh, sprinkler system to include a backflow preventer, so, I think it's a standard agreement.
How's Station Eleven coming along?
It's coming along well, they're getting ready to go vertical with it, so it's, it's moving now.
When you figure after the first of the year, being able to move in?
We hope so.
Very good. Any questions for chief? Thank you, sir. Item nineteen is a public hearing and, I guess just be a public hearing, a resolution declaring a weed and other vegetation nuisance and directing the abatement of said nuisance pursuant to Alabama law. Is Mr. Mack here tonight? No?
Marty Gilbert filling in for Robert.
Yes, sir.
Um, he has provided the nine properties that you see there. Few of these are annual offenders. Uh, he did not express any optimism for any of these coming off the list by Tuesday.
Must be the holiday. Any questions?
Mr. President, I have one.
Yes, sir.
Actually, I'm looking for the, here we go. And Mr. White, you may, you may know about this, the, the Shades Avenue property that was sent by email, do you think that's going to be added to the list, or would that be a later list, to come out maybe in a couple of weeks?
Due to state law, we'll have to send a notice, give them opportunity.
Okay.
So it's going to take several weeks.
Okay, great.
But it's already been voted to be taken care of once notice is complete?
Once notice is complete, it's going to come to council.
Okay.
It's a new complaint.
Okay.
In two thousand and nineteen, it went through the process, he cut it at the last minute, right before it came to council.
Okay, I'd, I'd noticed in the email that I thought maybe it was ready to go to our, uh, our, uh, company that, that's doing those properties when we need them.
Yes, sir, after more research, I discovered that, uh?
Okay.
Flashing back to last year, we got to start over.
Okay.
Hopefully, we're going to contact him and see if we can, we'll get it cut at this time, right?
Have you communicated that to?
To the?
He has, yeah.
Well, to the people that sent the email the last couple of days?
He did contact.
I've, I've sent an email out.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions on these properties? Thank you, sir. Any comments or questions? I know this is work session, but we're back in a, this isn't our first meeting here, our first meeting was canvassing the election, but, uh, in a very nice area, nice audio visuals, people can actually hear what we say. Sometimes we can even hear each other.
We can see.
And we can see. So, if we don't have anything else, we're adjourned.